Good evening and welcome to the September 11, 2019, meeting of the Milton Select Board. Before we begin, please join us as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. Item three on the agenda, those of us of a certain age all remember where we were.
All of us in this room.
Yeah, all of us in this room, actually, but many, many who are not. We remember where we were eighteen years ago today. Eighteen years ago today, on September 11, 2001, nearly 3,000 innocent people were murdered when this country was attacked. Hundreds of first responders, police officers, firefighters, EMTs, did what they do. They responded, and many of them perished as well. This country responded to that attack, and nearly 2,400 service people have died, and more than 20,000 have been wounded in the course of that response. So this is a somber anniversary, but it's important for us not to forget it, not to forget the people. It is an item on the agenda. I open the floor to any other members who want to say anything. Mr. Wells?
Mr. Chair, just thank you for those words. It is a, as I heard once articulated, September 11th of 2001 is the 9/11 of our parents' lives, the December Pearl Harbor of our parents' lives. Just to mention, more on a personal note for this community, eighteen, two days from now, eighteen years ago, three of us from here left for New York City with two trucks loaded with gear to support first responders from NYPD and FDNY. And that operation continued, run from this town for three months. We sent two trucks a week to 9/11, to New York City to Manhattan, and that went on. And that was really a proud thing. I remember when Jim Mullen was chairman of the board, Kevin Ren was chief, I was a deputy chief. And one of my closest friends, who was my roommate in the FBI academy two years earlier, was an inspector of the NYPD, and he had sent a list of what they needed, and you never knew wilder streams, did you think your own small town of Milton would have such a significant role? But it was a credit to the people of this community and all the law enforcement agencies around here who, for months, brought item after item after item to that police station. And we ran that operation for three months, two trucks a week. As we saw today across the world, and especially across this country, and especially in New York, Pennsylvania, and in Arlington, Virginia, the victims and responders who were so touched by this I never forgot, and it's very important that we, as a country, never forget that day. So thank you for this time tonight, for mentioning this about tonight.
So for all those who died, for all those who responded, for all those who have been affected, all those families have been affected by that attack, we do remember, and it's appropriate, I think, for us to take a moment of silence. Item four on the agenda, citizens speak. Mr. Corcoran.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, I thought I would follow up that very moving presentation and personalize it a little bit. One of those first responders who died going into the towers was my college roommate, junior year. He's a firefighter from, lieutenant in the fire department from Staten Island, New York. My oldest son was eight or nine at Glover School. I remember going down to Glover School to pick the kids up. He somehow, he never met Charlie, but he was aware of that relationship, and I think it's part of the reason why he enlisted. And he is serving in Afghanistan as we speak. So there's a personal connection there, there's a Milton thing, I know that's really significant, but I just thought I'd add a little bit of color to the personal. I know we all know people who died, who lost loved ones, but I had a close relationship with one, a son who followed him in his unique way.
Thank you for sharing that. Certainly all the best to you, and to your family, and to your son as well. All right, anyone else for citizens speak? Seeing none? Item five, discussion, item five, do we have item five?
I believe Mr. Hiss will be with us on the 25th of September.
Okay. We'll defer item five until the 25th. Item six, we don't need Ms. Neville here because she's teaching.
Right.
So, as I remember from last week, so we have the Smithsonian Public Garden Archives.
I'll make a motion to grant permission to the chair of the Milton Garden Comm, Garden Comm, sorry, Ms. Elizabeth Neville, to photograph public gardens in Milton for Smithsonian Archives of American Gardens project.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair, if I might, Ms. Neville appeared in town hall on Monday with even more information for us. Reintroductions were made to her and Alan Bishop, and they're currently working on the project. Subsequently, I sent out an email to all of the department heads and notified them that if their board or committee gets a reach out from either Ms. Neville or Mr. Bishop regarding a possible land, that may be under their jurisdiction to act accordingly. So I can be the signatory for the form for this board if you would like me to.
Yeah, I was actually looking for the form, and I don't see it here, but maybe, no, no, maybe we'll just authorize you to sign a form. I mean, so I'll add a friendly amendment, Richard, to your motion that the board authorizes Mr. Dennehy to sign on behalf of the board, to sign the application. It's an application on behalf of the board?
It is, yep.
I'll accept that, that's fine.
All right. So the amended motion, any further discussion on the amended motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Off Ms. Neville goes. She's not going to stop. Item seven, a conference with our friends from Massachusetts Department of Transportation and Howard Stein Hudson. And I see Mr. Trupanier and Ms. Lizza, and Mr. Bravely, who's not here tonight.
Mark cannot be with you, with us tonight, but hopefully we can suffice.
I'm sure you'll, I'm sure you'll do great. So thanks for being here.
Thank you for having us. We wanted to come back to Milton to have sort of this targeted conversation with the Select Board convened formally as a means to sort of solicit this body's feedback, response, commentary, critique, or commendations, whatever they may be, as a follow-up to our public meeting last month regarding the Route 28 at Chickatobit Road intersection project. So we have prepared a very abbreviated version of what we presented at that public meeting in this room several weeks ago. We thought it might make sense, in case there were members that weren't able to be at that meeting, that we present those again, just as, more as a refresher as well, especially for those who may be watching at home. So just a quick overview of what we're going to cover, just a bit of an overview of what we covered at the public meeting, some information about what we've been doing since, our next steps, and then try to save as much time as we can for actual conference discussion. I think everyone's familiar with the location. We're talking about Route 28 as it approaches where it intersects with the Blue Hills Reservation and intersects with Chickatobit Road, a major east-west cut-through route that we've identified is experiencing a great deal of traffic as what we expect, what we think is a cut-through for avoiding the Braintree split and trying to reach 138 and perhaps I-95 beyond. This is just a closer look at the aerial view of the existing conditions of the intersection. This is looking north-south, or north pointing up, where we've got Chickatobit Road cutting across the intersection, two lanes of travel in each direction on Route 28, and one lane of travel at Chickatobit Road. But the reason why we're here is to address what is a pretty significant safety issue. This intersection is identified as the top seventh most dangerous intersection in the Commonwealth. That is our newest measure of crashes and how we're ranking our most dangerous intersections. So this ranks number seven on our list of statewide top 200 crash locations. And you can see what that breakdown of what those crashes are, but over the course of three years, we had 60 crashes, 34 injuries and one fatality. And for those of us that speak in traffic safety, this is a pretty, this is pretty bad. Having 34 injuries at one location is a pretty telling story. There's, this is, this is something that, you know, obviously, and with the one fatality, this is something we can't leave unaddressed. So we have developed two potential designs to address those issues with a very particular focus on addressing the safety issues, and that is improve the signalized, signalized intersection conditions with some pretty standard traffic engineering countermeasures applied in terms of opening up some geometry and adding left-turn lanes and formalizing some of those movements that currently are kind of just open. It's kind of Wild West out there. And our preferred option, which is a roundabout design. These two, next two slides will show you, or several slides will show you sort of our signalized version of this build, which formalizes left turns on Route 28, provides a left turn on Chickatobit. This is one of the three signalized alternatives that we developed, the sort of big build, if you will, really adding all the bells and whistles to the signalized intersection. And for the sake of comparing the two, when we get to, when we hand it over to Jess to kind of talk through briefly some of the analysis that we had done in terms of operations of the intersection and its, and its expected safety performance in terms of how we're going to reduce crashes by introducing these safety countermeasures, this is the one we really wanted to compare those to, to kind of really be apples-to-apples. And really, the benefits is we provide some improvement for left turns by formalizing that left turn in its own space and in a left-turn lane. We get improved clearance times with new signal equipment and updated signal phasing and timing, and we have improved pedestrian and bicycle accommodation in the intersection alone. Some of the considerations here is it does, the signalized intersection will not address the speeding issues that we've got on 28, because when that light's green, you can, you just keep going. Traffic congestion remains essentially the same along Route 28 and kind of is continued to be metered by the stop-and-go nature of a signalized intersection. And there was some right-of-way, you know, property impacts to be considered here in terms of needing property from the Department of Conservation's Blue Hills Reservation, resulting in Article 97 disposition, which I usually wouldn't bring up, but in this town, I think you guys have some experience with that subject from our cute, our nice little project over in East Milton Square. But, you know, that's been something that we've very much been considering all along. And then this is a view of the roundabout alternative. I'm just going to scoot in here to zoom in on this, where we call this a two-by-one roundabout, where the main movements of traffic along Route 28 are accommodated with two lanes of travel, with one interior circulating lane that effectively replaces that left-turn lane function. We have looked very closely at this, I won't steal Jess's thunder, but this alternative has been, you know, very carefully considered. It does, as we noted in our public meeting, require the full, the total taking of the property on the corner, and to the extent that we can, we're trying to minimize other, you know, private property impacts. And of course, there's, you know, sort of this unusual conversation we're going to have to have with DCR where what otherwise would have been more clearly aligned as this is Chickatobit Road at the edge of a signal, a signalized intersection, now part of that roundabout's going to have to extend into what is otherwise, well, the otherwise Blue Hills Reservation. So that's some considerations we still have to work out. We've been partnered with DCR, they've reviewed our alternative, and I think we feel pretty comfortable that, you know, they also prefer the roundabout alternative. One of the issues that a roundabout versus a signalized intersection does not, that's sort of different from a standard intersection, is you don't get your pedestrian phase, you don't get the walk symbol here. We have to rely on some different technological interventions, which we feel very confident that based on the nature of the roundabout as a traffic calming device, that we can slow speeds through things like the geometry of the approach to the circle, the so-called deflection of that approach. As you can see, especially pretty pronounced in both the bottom-left and the top-right corners, where you can see the lines of those lanes really taking a sharper corner, that really, that really starts to slow traffic down. We got a lot of, a lot of feedback at the public meeting that, you know, we don't want another rotary, and we did our best to describe, and not only that night, but now in a frequently asked questions and FAQ document we've posted to our website, to describe, you know, to the extent that we can in plain language, the difference between a rotary and a roundabout, and how they really are very different interventions. One's fat, big, one's small, one's fast, one's slow. But to the extent that it needs to, we think this processes traffic even better than a signalized alternative when considering the entire context. So this is just a quick, a look at what those, what that technological intervention is and putting rectangular rapid flashing beacons. These things are pedestrian-actuated or cyclist-activated, and they alert the driver with a strobe-light-like effect that, hey, you need to slow down and stop. The benefit is, you only need to call it when you're there, and you don't have that regular operational impact on traffic. And you're really only crossing 24, 25 feet at a time, you know, and with the slower speeds of a roundabout, that severity of injury potential is really quite significantly decreased when you have a much lower design speed in a roundabout versus the high speeds of a, you know, through traffic in a green signal. So again, the roundabout alternative provides us with a lot of benefits that are addressing more, more completely comprehensively the need for the project, which is reducing speed through the intersection, a significant reduction of fatal and injury crashes while potentially, you know, maybe causing one or more, you know, a thunderbender where it may not have been occurring with a dedicated left-turn lane if everyone followed the rules, frankly, but at the benefit of really significantly minimizing that chance of fatal or injury crashes. We improved traffic operations on Route 28 and to some, I'll just, you know, I'll just say it, and Jess will show you the numbers, but to some impact at Chickatobit Road because of the unbalanced nature of the traffic, which we think there's an unanticipated benefit there by starting to minimize that cut-through desire. You know, if we make it a little more frictiony for the Chickatobit cut-through, we may start to see some relatively improved regional traffic patterns over time that may actually provide some benefit, not only for the, for the community at large, but for some of the neighbors not too far from the intersection. We have improved pedestrian and cyclist accommodations through the intersection with dedicated off-road shared-use paths to safely navigate through and then use those RFBs to make those shorter crossings. And we have lifecycle cost benefits where we no longer have signal equipment to maintain, and this operates without, without those, without that, without that technology in the field. It is a much more difficult project to construct from a traffic management perspective, we know that. Frankly, as we heard at the public meeting here, it's a bit more difficult to envision as well, and that if there aren't roundabouts nearby that, you know, don't provide a good analog, that it's, it can be hard to envision, and we recognize that, and we want to do our best to kind of do a better job educating everyone on why we think this is such a good idea. Like I said, the Chickatobit Road queuing does worsen in one direction in the AM and another in the PM, and we have more substantial right-of-way impacts, both on the Blue Hills and at the private property on the corner. And there is the unprotected, you know, pedestrian crossings without a dedicated pedestrian phase. But we feel confident that those things can be mitigated through, through, you know, good design and careful consideration of those, of those things. So I'm going to give it to Jess to do the fun part, the analysis.
Thanks. So as a part of the alternatives analysis for this project, we had an independent safety review look at the two alternatives and come up with, you know, how will the crashes in the future compare to doing nothing versus the signalized alternative and the roundabout alternative? And what we found was that while both alternatives are shown to decrease overall crashes, the roundabout is expected to significantly decrease fatal and injury crashes by 73% compared to only 44% decrease under the signalized alternative. And a lot of that is because of the reasons Michael already stated. The geometric design of a roundabout slows people down. The crashes we observed at the intersection today, 70% of the crashes are relating to left-turning vehicles. So the roundabout design inherently removes that left-turn angle collision from the design, which will significantly increase, sorry, decrease the likelihood of fatal and injury crashes. And the slower speeds, if a crash does occur, it's less likely to be severe. And so you can see that the signal has a slightly better reduction in property damage-only crashes, but not nearly the same reduction in fatal and injury crashes as the roundabout has.
Right, right. And thanks for that. That was the one thing my colleague Courtney Warhunsky from District Six kept reminding me on the way down here, is really, it's just about the left-turn crashes. Forgot. So thanks for that, Jess.
So we performed an operational analysis comparing the no-builds alternative, so growing future volumes out 10 years, but, you know, with no infrastructure improvements at the intersection, how do we expect it to perform? And then compared that with the roundabout alternative and the signalized intersection alternative. And what we saw was that the roundabout alternative seems to have less queuing expected for all approaches apart from the Chickatobit Road approach, which is due to that unbalanced flow of the roundabout because Route 28 has the dominant traffic volume. It, you know, could be more difficult for vehicles from Chickatobit Road to get gaps into the roundabout, but Randolph Avenue is shown to have significantly less queuing. We observed, you know, approximately 26 vehicles to 23 vehicles in the northbound and southbound under the no-build alternative, which is shown to be reduced to about five vehicles under the roundabout. And then the signalized alternative shows more favorable queuing operations along Chickatobit Road, but significantly less favorable queuing operations along Randolph Avenue, so.
Yeah, and just to point it out, because this slide does get a little busy.
Yeah.
Looking at it, just sitting here even, we, those numbers are the number of vehicles that are expected to queue in the 95th?
These are the average queues. So during your peak hours, though, so your AM morning commute, your PM evening commute, and then your Saturday midday peak hour, what is the average amount of vehicles waiting at the intersection during those times? And the other thing to highlight is that while there's some queuing shown to be expected along Chickatobit Road, directionally during the morning and evening peak, during the off-peaks, it performs considerably better, and you're getting those all-day safety benefits over the signalized alternative.
Can I just ask quickly on that slide? Just so you have it. Just, are these, for the purposes of the apples-to-apples comparison?
These are.
Is this cumulative with that? In other words, are these two, Route 28 southbound, do I, do I compare that with Route 28 southbound on that? So I accumulate, so this would be eight as opposed to two? Is that right?
Yeah, so it would be two vehicles waiting in the left-turn lane and then six vehicles waiting in the through-right-turn lane, because it'll be two separate lanes under the signalized approach. And then, yeah, the southbound will probably have about, under the roundabout, about two vehicles per lane.
Right, but I mean, let's, let's, let's take a little gut check on that, right? I mean, that's a pretty short queue. I mean, that's, that's really short. You know, so they're, they're pretty similar. I mean, I think in that, you know, one versus two vehicles, we're talking 20 versus 40 feet or, you know, 30 feet.
Yeah.
But that was why we also wanted to put this in terms of vehicles, because, you know, when I was looking at this slide originally, it was in, we had it in feet, and I'm like, this doesn't mean anything to me. You know, and we kind of wanted to be, wanted it to be a little more accessible. I think one of the things you might be thinking of is, is on the next slide where we talked about level of service, and during the public meeting, we pointed out that signalized versus unsignalized level of service has a different measure. And Jess, I'm sorry, I'm stealing your thunder, I don't mean to do that.
No problem.
Why don't you go ahead and explain this again for the sake of re-reviewing?
Sure. Yeah, so a level of service is basically like applying a grade to each approach to the intersection, and then you usually average that out for your overall level of service. So it's relatively intuitive in that A is the most favorable, F is the least favorable. It's pretty common to have some Es or Fs in an urban environment, we just try and minimize them as much as possible. But what the level of service is based on is your average delay during the peak hour. And so what Michael is saying is that your letter grades for a signal actually have a higher threshold, so your E under a signal actually allows for a higher delay than your E under an unsignalized intersection such as a roundabout. So it's not quite a direct comparison of delay, but it's supposed to be a relative comparison of level of service because people have a higher threshold waiting on a signal because they expect to have to stop.
Right. So there's some, there is some sort of logic behind it, but when comparing an F at a roundabout versus an F at a signal, it's, they're not the same amount of time.
Yeah.
And, and you see some F on the roundabout in terms of the overall AM peak hour, but again, as we noted previously, that's because of Chickatobit westbound in the AM and Chickatobit eastbound in the, in the PM.
Mm-hmm.
And again, I really think, I don't think we did enough, we didn't do a very good job explaining this perhaps the first time around in that the way that regional traffic patterns work, at least theoretically, is that traffic flows like water. And the reason why traffic's flowing here is because it's getting, it's hitting less resistance at Chickatobit than it is at the Braintree split, and folks are cutting through. And frankly, even at Mastox, we believe that regional traffic belongs on regional roadways and not in our, not in our community streets. Chickatobit's a unique sort of Parkway-like piece of infrastructure that, you know, frankly, was not intended to, to carry regional traffic, and to some extent that those cut-through drivers start to experience these queues, you know, maybe, maybe it's, it's more tolerable than sitting in traffic on the interstate, maybe it's not. But we think that that may have some positive effect over time in that, you know, we might get some better balance of those, of who those users are, you know, and the folks who need to use it to local, for local access may have some more, some better access. It's really difficult to predict that, and so that's very much a qualitative theory that we have, but, but there is that potential unintended consequences. Consequence.
Yeah.
Unless there were more questions on this level of service, sorry, I didn't mean to rush us along.
No problem. So we've begun design development on the 25% design of the roundabout alternative. So right now, we're just working on developing our design plans. Now that the project has gone the route of the roundabout from the original signal improvements envisioning, we'll be developing additional survey, and we'll be performing further traffic analysis using a program called Visum. So it's a micro-simulation which will help us provide better simulations to try and visualize this publicly.
So, so yeah, that's, that's our next steps. And so the next time you see us formally, barring any sort of special requests, to come back in an interim basis, you'll, you'll be seeing us again at our formal 25%. you'll be seeing us again at our twenty, our formal twenty-five percent design public hearing where we would be presenting a much more refined version of, of the concept you saw this evening. Uh, we do need to continue coordination with the Transit Authorities, MBTA and, and BAT, um, uh, to, to ensure that we're, we're considering, uh, their needs for their bus stop locations in the, in the area. And of course, ongoing coordination with DCR, uh, both from a track, traffic operations and a, uh, parkland conservation perspective. Um, and, uh, we don't have, uh, our schedule quite worked out. Jess and I were talking about it, uh, before we got started here tonight. Uh, there's a bit of a hiccup with the need for that additional survey. I know there is a, a great desire to get something done out here and we are doing, uh, what we can to expedite this design. Um, I hope that's felt here tonight that, you know, we are, uh, really serious about moving this along. Uh, we currently have it, uh, the project programmed, um, in, uh, twen- the, the federal fiscal year 2021. Uh, it is underprogrammed, I'll just admit it, you know, just so it's, it's clear that we recognize that. We have about a million and a half, uh, uh, program for the project in our, in the STIP, uh, statewide transportation improvement plan, uh, using statewide safety dollars. Uh, so that, those are, those are discretionary dollars that Mastot, uh, can, can earmark at, at our discretion. And we fully intend to, um, fully fund the, this project, um, at closer to probably about five million, um, when we do our STIP development, every, our annual STIP development in, in January. Uh, but in terms of when we get to twenty-five percent design, I think we're, we're hoping, um, for what, late fall to, to get it submitted to Mastot for review. And I would expect, and again, we need to kind of sharpen our pencils on this, but I would expect we'd be coming back next winter for our, uh, design public hearing.
This one, do you mean, 2020?
Well, it's still summer in my mind.
Me too. Did you see the temperature today?
I know, right? Uh, maybe, but, but more realistically, it's probably spring. Um, but that's going to be Josh Bartis' job. Uh, we put him on this slide, but Josh is going to be assuming, uh, the role of, uh, project manager, you know, sort of, I'll be handing that off. Courtney Warhansky will be, is, will always, in my, in my hopeful opinion, uh, always be on all of your projects here in District Six, uh, which Milton is a member of. Um, and, uh, so we'll have certainly some continuity. Josh was here at the public meeting before, he couldn't be with us tonight. I think his kid has, uh, some.
It's okay, we get it.
Sport event.
We get it.
But, uh, but he did want to be here and I wanted to just acknowledge that, um, there will be some transition on the, on the project management side from Mastot. So with that, we wanted to just offer some of the, the renderings we showed. Um, they're not really showing up great on the screen now, but, um, you know, sort of what we can expect, uh, this facility to look like at a very conceptual level. So, any questions for?
Questions, comments from the members?
I, I will just make, sorry.
Well, you presented at the library a few weeks back, right?
Yeah.
I was actually here.
It was here, yeah. So, so you presented the signaling option and you presented the roundabout option. And for the people that were attending, they were, I, I wasn't in attendance, but I had heard that there was vocal opposition to the roundabout. And I was curious, wh- wh- why was that? Because to me, the roundabout option clearly is the better option. There are two primary objectives here: improve safety and improve efficiencies, right? Okay, cut down on the accidents and improve the time you can get through this intersection. The roundabout, to me, clearly accomplishes both those goals the best.
Yep.
So what were the oppositions to the roundabout?
To be, to be frank, I think, um, I think, and I said this that evening, that, you know, we, we were asked point blank, well, why can't you offer any, you know, examples of a, of an intersection like this nearby? And I said frankly, it's because, you know, change comes hard. And, um, I think there's a misperception around what a roundabout is, a modern roundabout.
Okay.
That is, you know, scaled this size rather than a rotary that's scaled this size.
So let me stop you for a second. When you made the presentation, did you offer these visuals?
Yes.
And, and the message didn't, it didn't?
I think it's an understanding, I think there's, you know, understand a grasp. I know when we first heard it, that was what, six months ago at your meeting, I'll be honest, and I've been to hundreds of accidents at that intersection. It was not on my radar. You know, I just, I had to think about it a ton to think, and now I get it. I definitely get it.
It sort of takes a moment. I mean, I used to be the same way. So, um, my, my boss, uh, my manager, uh, his, his name's Andrew Paul, he is our roundabout specialist at, at Mastot. Um, he is someone that, you know, people have been asking to present on, on this, these kinds of projects for a long time. Uh, Courtney as well, has a great deal of experience in, in innovative, uh, project design. And I, I remember years ago saying to Andy, I don't buy it. I just don't buy it. And you've got to really experience them to sort of build the trust. Um, and we don't really have that many of them in eastern Massachusetts. It's, it, they're just not that common, especially multi-lane roundabouts. Uh, there are a number of examples, I think there's one in Dedham.
Yeah, I was just going to say.
Just for context, uh, you know, it's more similar to the.
Actually, can you speak into the microphone just so people can hear?
Here.
Oh, sorry, I don't want to.
No, go ahead.
But, um, yeah, it's, it's more similar to the East Street, the smaller East Street roundabout near the, the local coffee shop in Dedham than the giant East Street rotary that's over the highway. So I think people, sometimes they hear a circular intersection, they think about the giant rotary over the highway, where really they should be thinking about the modern roundabout, which is the smaller circular intersection in Dedham on East Street, so.
One, one thing I might suggest.
Thank you, Courtney.
To, to, to help further your point and, and get the message across is, is to include a, an example of what a roundabout is not, you know, and show, say, you know, my, people might think rotary, they think, you know, the Cape Cod rotary, right?
Right.
You know, born in Sagamore Bridge.
That came up, that came up.
Yeah.
But, but my first thought was that, that small little rotary in, in Dedham, or, or roundabout rather. And then, um, I think of all the, uh, uh, the Parkway and, and West Roxbury and all those, you know, by the church. I mean, is that, is that a rotary or roundabout? It's kind of in the middle, right?
They're larger than the modern roundabout we would be wanting to design here.
Okay.
Um, so I think that's part of the misconception is that there are not a lot of multi-lane modern roundabouts that are designed. You know, I think in our area, we've had a lot of lessons learned. They're certainly used across the country and in other countries extensively. Um, and, you know, time after time, studies have shown that they improve safety for injury and fatal collisions. Um, but they are relatively new and a lot of people don't understand them. Um, and so I do think when we go back for the design public hearing, that education will certainly be a larger part of our presentation and outreach moving forward. Um, we've tried to do that on the website now with frequently asked questions. We posted some guides on, you know, roundabout versus rotary and there is, um, a lot of things online like common roundabout myths, um, because there are a lot of misconceptions surrounding them. So we think those educational pieces will help. And historically, there have been studies that, um, basically measure public support before and after roundabouts get installed. And it's pretty common that you have public opposition moving into a roundabout. And then a significant amount of that opposition does reduce post-installation.
Right. And, and I'll just say, we, we didn't expect that, that level of concern and opposition. And we are very serious about, um, and I said this, uh, the night of our public meeting and I'll say it again tonight, we're very serious about addressing safety in, at a location like this. We have a, we have a signalized intersection there today. There's only so much lines and signs.
That's right.
And new signal heads can do to change those conditions. And, you know, frankly, we're, we're at a new age of how Mastot is looking at safety and considering how we're spending our, our, our precious dollars. And, uh, you know, in this case, we're not taking the easy way out. We're spending two to three times what we would've. And, you know, we're pretty serious about, you know, making sure we do the job that we need to do. And rather than relying on completely like, hey, go to a website, we're going to bring that information to our public hearing. We're going to lay that stuff out. We're going to do what we can to go on that educational campaign, not, not necessarily just as a sales job, but as a means to, to sort of convince folks that, you know, not just trust us, we're, we're here to help. It's, you know, we want everyone to be part of the conversation and understand that. Uh, we do think this is the best, uh, treatment for the area.
Mr. Welsh.
You, you good?
I am, thank you, Richard.
So, so just two, two points. One other thing, and this is part of the analysis that I'm aware of, that you're, you're unable to show is that both the congestion, which is daily, the twenty, and the pressure of the congestion, as well as the speed a, a aspect of it, they're primary contributors to a recipe for violations. And one of the things you're not getting is how many of these accidents occurred because the frustration of a motor's too now speeds because they don't want to sit in the queue, they don't want to sit in the congestion any longer, or they race the light on the left and right turns to try and jump it, which then becomes the causation fact, the primary causation for the accident and then the injuries that happen. I do want to point out, and I've been watching this now because my thought, when you first talked about the signalization, because I remember the project, are we fifteen years or twenty years out of the last project? We're, we're a ways out of that last project.
It's been a while.
Yeah. Is that if we did the signalization, five years from now or even less, we're going to, would at this border, we feel in the same pressure because the contributing factors for violations will still exist if the intersection basically stays with left and right turns. It's going to. Secondly is that, and this, this came from Mrs. Collins, and you can tell me if I'm wrong, you supplied a great article that I read, and I think it was at National Publication AARP.
Mm-hmm.
On roundabouts nationwide, on the, the trend to move both efficiency-wise and safety-wise to roundabouts in this country. And I believe, you tell me if the number's wrong, the fourteen thousand or four thousand last year? I, for some reason, I think it's fourteen thousand.
I, I think you're right, but I, I think people should go check it out because it's actually on the town website.
You put that article there?
Yeah, um, I think, uh, our.
It's a fourteen thou- I think there were fourteen thousand projects ongoing last year for, for construction of these exact type roundabouts.
Yes. They're very, very supportive.
I get it. I, and, and as you noted, if you go anywhere in Europe, they're everywhere. And I believe to, to, to Mr. Farrington's point, Braintree has installed two, um, in the Liberty Street Grove, and they've, they've put two like, in a much less, I mean, busy streets, but nowhere near the pressure. And I drive through this every morning and I drive through this every afternoon. I lived on twenty-eight for twenty years. If you understand traffic following the congestion, you can see how on its current design with the right and left-hand turns, it's a recipe for, it's a recipe for violation and it's a recipe for injury. So I get where you're going with it.
Those are really great points and I think that, I appreciate the, the insight, especially with your background, um, that, you know, it's harder for us to say that with any sort of definitive.
Right.
Quantification, right? Like, i- unless, you know, unless someone was honest in, in the police report and something.
Right, yeah.
But we know that driver behavior.
It's not a box you can check.
Yeah, no, it's not. But I mean, driver behavior is absolutely, it, you see it happen every day during rush hour. And so, yeah, those are, those are good points. I'm happy for you to make them. I'll keep, I'll keep making them.
May I add one, one comment, Mr. Chair? Um, so my two takeaways from that meeting was, um, public safety, they're going with the, the higher cost alternative, right? They're spending more money to make it safer.
Yes.
And there was a gentleman who was here whose name escapes me, who at the beginning resisted the philosophy of a roundabout. And as the meeting transpired, um, he was warm, literally, his words were, I'm warming up to this, but I do need to see the computer science technology, which is what they're going to reveal in their twenty-five percent design, that shows the flow, right? He, he, he warmed to the idea throughout the public meeting. He was against and then might be for it, but wants to see that the, the computer software technology show him that what they're explaining is actually what's going to take place there from a, from a, a flow perspective. Um, and, and that was one of the main takeaways that, that I, I heard that.
We're certainly committed to doing whatever, whatever it takes to, to make our case.
Other comments, questions, Ms. Collins?
I was only able to attend a part of that meeting, but I was surprised by some of the opposition to the roundabout, which, you know, as a layperson, this seemed like an interesting idea and made, made some sense. I guess my question is more in, in, this may be outside the scope of the project, but once you're beyond the, the roundabout and you're traveling northbound on twenty-eight, that becomes a freeway. So will this project, I, I know it's going to eliminate the left-hand turn of the crashes and the fatalities, but will it do anything in your estimation to help slow any of the traffic beyond, once you, once you get through the roundabout and you're heading north onto twenty-eight?
I think to an extent it will slow the traffic departing this intersection, but I wouldn't say that it's going to have corridor-long impacts to driver behavior, especially because once you get north of this, you're hitting standard signals. So you're hitting hillside, you're hitting, I think, a signal north of that.
Hell and up, yes. I, I, that's a good point.
I guess I'm wondering then, is there anything, any way to either blend into this project or to consider, you know, is a stoplight further up northbound necessary to help slow some of the traffic or would that exacerbate problems at the roundabout? Are you looking at any of that as part of this project?
Uh, bluntly, no. Um, but it, it, I think there's a bit of a can of worms there, right? In that, um, one of the things we heard at the public meeting is, you know, this is nice, but what about the rest of twenty-eight? Um, and, um, you, you know, I, I'm not, I'm not sure that, it certainly isn't within the scope of this project. Um, but I think that there is certainly appetite to look at a corridor-wide, uh, the corridor-wide need and understand what interventions there could be. You know, I mean, it's a long, straight corridor with two lanes in each direction. Uh, given the traffic volumes, you know, it presents challenges, given the, the, you know, sort of, uh, property constraints, the, the, the real physical constraints of what we can do with a corridor like this. It, it's challenging. I think that that's why we have what we have, you know, what came out of the design from twenty years ago. Um, you know, there may be some innovative things that we could, we could do. Uh, we're not going to do that as part of this project, but certainly something we can consider as sort of a next phase. Um, you know, uh, introducing new signals requires warrants and, you know, all sorts of things like that. Um, but, but just even, you know, Jess, Jess was being a bit conservative. I think by introducing this sort of feature in the corridor, it may help change the cor- the nature of the corridor. You know, it doesn't, it doesn't solve all the problems, we know that. But we're solving, we want to solve the biggest problem, which is, like I said, the top seventh crash location in the state. And unfortunately, given some of the constraints of, of how our programs work and, you know, our, our, um, the nature of our work, we are focused on the intersection. Um, but if there were some lower cost things that we could do to intervene, we can certainly look at that. Um, but we are very limited and very constrained north and south of here.
I believe the last project, the twenty-year-old project, to Katie's point, added the two sets of lights which now exist at Hillside and twenty-eight and Reed Street twenty-eight. Those were additions that came as a result of, because that was more of a corridor-wide project. It went, it went from the intersection of Chick all the way down to Reed'sdale and, but to Kate's point, I, and I, as soon as you said it, I can see it having an effect on northbound traffic coming into town between, say, Chickatahbit and Hillside Street. Then once you, as you know, once you cross Hillside and you continue north, it's a downhill grade with a double lane. I mean, it just.
Typically what we would do, sorry to interrupt.
No, go ahead, no.
But typically what we would be looking at, I mean, again, the volumes here would be very prohibitive. We'd be looking at a road diet, you know, elimination of a lane and introduction of a new center turn lane. Um, I think, I'm not sure what the daily volume is here, but generally that's sort of twenty-five thousand a day is really the upper limit for an intervention like that. Um, it, it's a tough corridor, it really is.
John Thompson has mentioned that.
Other questions, comments? Ms. Collins?
Um, one of the objections I think I heard at the meeting, uh, was the, both the, the property, the, the residents who own property and then the businesses between, um, that, well, what would be then, uh, a, a roundabout and the hillside light.
Mm-hmm.
There seems to be a concern that at certain hours anyway, that the, the traffic would be so steady that there wouldn't be a chance for, right, gaps.
Yeah, I mean.
That's a Jess question.
Yeah. So, traveling southbound on twenty-eight, because you still have the hillside traffic signal, you'll still receive some gaps in flow from, resulting from that signal north of the businesses in between the two intersections. Um, there, it's a valid concern that there could be less gaps coming northbound in Route twenty-eight because you're, you're, you're no longer stopping Route twenty-eight traffic apart from, you know, yielding to a crosswalk or another vehicle. Um, but I, I would say, I mean, you could, if, if you are very concerned about turning left, you, you could turn right and travel through the roundabout and reverse direction that way. And you, that would be a safe passage to turn left out of a business if you're concerned about accepting the gaps that were coming your way.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. So that sounds like an education piece for people.
I mean, and, and thank you for bringing that back up because I, I, I'm not sure that even made it into our FAQ's, but that's, that's great to highlight because you're right, that was definitely a difficult question, um, that we, we should, we should highlight. I mean, I don't, I'm not sure anyone's going to want to hear you need to go south to go north.
Yeah.
But, you know, it's sort of a modified Michigan U. But, you know, it's sort of a modified Michigan U.
Ms. Collins?
That actually might be a reason to consider a signal further up, northbound.
Coming...
Near one of the businesses, yes.
Coming at time.
Somebody to think about.
Yeah, absolutely. I think it's, it's difficult for us to propose a signal at a private driveway.
Yeah, I get that.
Not necessarily private driveway, but I mean, somewhere along the way that where it may make sense, where it might naturally create gap for the business owner. But, you know, if a business owner's gonna be impacted by this, then it seems to me something that's fair to consider, anyway.
And the neighborhoods as well.
In the neighborhoods as well.
There was a concern raised by the neighborhood, by the neighborhood, that they, they would have more trouble getting out. And so that's along the same lines, I think.
Yeah, those are considerations, but I, I mean, I'll just, again, remind, remind everyone, and we will again, at the public hearing, you know, a lot of what we talk about is peak-hour conditions, you know?
Exactly right.
Is when things are congested. That's not all day, it's not all night. It's, you know, maybe two and a, two, two and a half hours a day. And there's certainly things we wanna, we wanna mitigate any, any of those potential impacts to the extent that we can, but also remind ourselves that there may not be as much of an impact in, in the future reality than what we're perceiving.
Just to that point, I live on 28th, but further beyond St., coming up here beyond St. Elizabeth's, closer to the, the middle school, and, you know, it takes me some mornings, three traffic cycles to get out of a driveway. So if this, if this roundabout is going to impact residents being able to get out of a driveway, get out of, you know, what, the Handed or some of those streets up in that neighborhood, then I think it's probably something to think about, even if it's just peak hours, because that's when people are trying to...
That's when people are trying to get out of the driveway.
Right, right.
Right, and I, I totally appreciate that, I don't mean to, I don't mean to sound flippant about it. So, you know, we do need to be better prepared to answer that, to respond to that.
And that's something that you can look at in that finer-grain modeling that you're gonna be doing, or no?
Yeah, it might be difficult because we probably don't have traffic volumes coming out of those minor roads outside of our study area, but I mean, can certainly look at how the traffic is flowing north and south from our intersection. You know, we'll definitely do our best to capture that in the model.
To Katie's point, she's right in the morning, in the morning, both at Kerrigan's Corner and at Hayley's Corner, when it queues up on the northbound, it's pretty, but to that issue that was raised by the businesses and that, that's what it is in the afternoon now. Yeah, it's so, I, I only see this relieving this, because it's so queued between Chickatahut and Hillside Street, it doesn't move. There's no gaps. There's no gaps in that PM commute. This has to make it better than what it is now.
And I think the visual simulation, what we refer to as visum, that, that will probably start to show some of that, that sort of car behavior.
Any other questions, comments? Very quickly, timing, we're talking about twenty-five percent design this winter?
Yeah, I don't wanna put Jess in the box.
No, no, I understand, I understand.
We were literally just talking about sharpening our pencils on the schedule earlier, but yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you can appreciate the, the time sensitivity here, and I think you said FY '21 funding?
Right now, the, the program is funded in FY '21. Given the Article 97 requirements, I don't see a path for staying in twenty, in, in federal fiscal '21. Whether or not we could feel a little more confident with, say, first quarter '22, especially given the funding needs that, you know, we're sort of underfunded, and we may have a little more opportunity if we program in a subsequent fiscal year. But perhaps that goes out to construction, goes out to bid in calendar '22. We just have a bunch of unknowns, especially as it relates to the Article 97 legislation.
Yeah, I understand. I, I think one of the messages that our board would reinforce and reiterate with you, is something you're well aware, is that we need action on this as soon as possible.
That's correct, Mr. Chair.
I understand all of the, I understand all of the, the roadblocks, if you will, along the way, but, but to the extent we can, we can move things along faster, that...
Yeah, absolutely.
That may save, save danger.
May save a life.
Exactly right.
As I said when I was here last time, we're here to stop the bloodshed.
Right.
And if that takes a little extra work on our behalf, we're, we're, we're here to do it.
Right.
And I think that frankly, part of that expediting that process is happening right now, right in this room, making sure, we've heard from everyone who has a, a major stake, and this board is certainly one of our most substantial stakeholders. So we really appreciate the opportunity to present with you, for you to offer us an audience, and, and we're available, we're on call. Your administrator is, is, is an email away, and as we are as well, so I just wanna make sure that that, that's clear for all the members. We really wanna do the best job we can do here, as quickly as we can do it.
Great, thank you, thank you.
All right.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you very much.
And a conference with the Airplane Noise Advisory Committee, update by the Chair, Mr. Andrew Schmidt.
Hello, everyone, thank you. We're gonna do a switch, a quick switch-out of the laptop, Jen's gonna help me with the, just a couple of additional pieces of information that have come up since I, since I emailed you earlier.
That's, that's one of my concerns. Welcome.
Chris. Fantastic. Okay, so thank you, everyone, for, for allowing me to, to come and see tonight, I really appreciate it. As you know, it has been a while since we've given you an update, and, and so it's, there are certainly a lot of things that I and the committee would like to bring to your attention. There are, and let me just make sure I'm doing this right, fantastic. There are three, three categories that, that I really wanna talk to you about tonight. One are facts, things that we know, that can prove and, and are able to, to measure. Others are observations, some of the things that we've been seeing in the, in the, in the area, in the, in the overall trends for, for air traffic in New England specifically. And then the last recommendations, so some things that we believe can be done to at least move us along the, the path of lessening the burden that people in Milton are feeling under, under the current air traffic, under the current air traffic volumes. The first is the, what we're seeing in the newspaper. So the recent headlines are talking about a good number of things. Logan Airport's become the tenth-largest airport in the country, and these are all within the last thirty, sixty days. Logan Airport having a record-breaking 2018, the most, most passengers ever, and talking about a forty-one percent growth in the number of, of departures between 2010, 2017. A challenge from JetBlue to Delta, come and get us, try and displace us here in Boston. And in fact, it's this, it's this jockeying back and forth that is driving a lot of the volume growth. And then the last one, and in many ways, one of the most disturbing, and I appreciate the, the letter that the Select Board sent about this, the FAA's move to try and bring supersonic back. The, and what I think is important to, to, to look at in this article is not talking about the possibility of, of it coming back, it's looking for the eventual return. This is something that they wanna get done, this is something that the, that the industry wants to get done. So from there, you know, one of the, an apologies, the, it looks like I've got an interesting font issue going on, but the, but the, the, the number of noise complaints are, they certainly rose pretty steadily from 2001 to 2012, but the, but the, the, the growth is almost, is almost vertical right now. And I've got an asterisk next to that ninety-seven thousand, three hundred and thirty-nine number, because that's only through July thirtieth, or thirty-first. A lot of the, and, and you'll see that our, our complaint numbers have dropped a little bit, but again, that's only the first seven months of the year. What's interesting is that, you know, this, this increase in noise complaints corresponds exactly with the implementation of the RNFs. And, and it's not just us, it's other towns that are complaining as well. But the, you know, you've seen a forty-X growth in the number of, of noise complaints that have been filed at Logan since 2012, and you've seen a three-hundred-and-forty-time increase in the number of noise complaints that the people in Milton have filed. So it's a, it's an incredible, incredible trend, one that, that is quite frankly disturbing for, for everyone who lives under a flight path. And there are few, there are few drivers behind it. The, along with that is, is what we see is the, the last four years of, of noise complaints, we file typically about half of the noise complaints in a, in a given year. And, and what we're seeing is that, or when you take a look at the numbers since 2012, Milton residents have fired, filed, rather, over a hundred-and-ten-thousand noise complaints since 2012. We've been, we've been number one, not the, not a good category to be in for, for a number of years. We actually may lose that title this year, because Medford, a city that's three times our size, is, is finally filing more noise complaints than we are. So you're seeing that the, that the, that it's not just us anymore, and it's becoming an issue that hopefully Massport and the FAA can, cannot continue to ignore. Now, the percentage of noise complaints varies by month, and so you'll see that, that, that line across the, the middle is, is the average for 2018, where we filed about forty-nine percent of all the noise complaints that Logan received. And those, those complaints, that percentage tends to correspond with the times that people wanna be outside, being outside for, have their windows open, have family events and so on, be able to enjoy their backyards here in Milton. And, and I don't see this, I don't see this pattern going away, because this also corresponds with the, where we're seeing the majority of air travel. People wanna, wanna travel when it's nice weather, and, and so this is the, the pattern that we're going to continue to see, in my opinion. Comparing us to our neighbors, we continue to file over nineteen times as many noise complaints as our neighbors, have done so since 2012. I had this originally in, in, in rank order, from left to right, from Waymouth to Matapan, and left it, didn't re, didn't re-allocate the numbers, because I wanted to, to show you that Hyde Park has been filing a larger number of noise complaints over the last few years, which brings them to number three. But even so, a hundred-and-ten-thousand, three-hundred-and-thirty versus our nearest competitor, our nearest neighbor, two-thousand-nine-hundred-and-seventy-eight, is pretty, it's pretty clear where the volume is going and, and what burden is being felt by our townspeople. Some, some data from Logan and some of the information that they're providing in their reports, the, the trend towards, or the trend for the, for the aircraft landing at Logan is towards bigger, bigger aircraft, so not just the A320s, but the A330s, even the A380s, which can carry two-hundred-and-forty-plus people. With bigger planes, you get more passengers, with more passengers and bigger planes, you get more noise. And so, and one of the, one of the, the issues here is the simple law of physics. Bigger planes need longer distance to, to stop on, they need a longer runway. And so the preference has been, and we've even seen the, the patterns shift to accommodate it, the, the patterns is to, is to let these larger planes land on 4R. It's the second-largest runway, but, but because it's, because it's got that parallel runway of 4L, it becomes the preferred runway. And so as you get more and more planes, bigger and bigger planes, you're gonna see the fours being used more often. It's just the way, it's just the way the, the, the airport's configured, and, you know, despite the fact that 22 is the exact same runway pair, just in the opposite direction, you're not seeing, you're seeing growth there, but you're not seeing the same, the same type of usage, because, because they have a restriction on 22R. Twenty-two R being, of course, the, 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 the 4L from the opposite direction. You can't land large planes on, on, on 22R, where you can land them on 4L. So there is a bit of, an artificial barrier there, and, and you'll continue to see the fours being used in, in peak traffic in bad weather, because you'll have that parallel runway as a, as a safety feature. And, you know, safety, safety is important, and, you know, just the last conversation was all about safety. But safety, unlike the, unlike the Chickatahut issue, is also a euphemism. Safety becomes a euphemism for convenience. It's just easier to land on the fours than it is to use other runway pairs, because you can just keep the, keep the line going all morning, all afternoon, and all night. Let's see. Another interesting trend, volume overall in the US is down. So it's, it's starting to pick back up again in, over the 2017, 2018 period, but from 2008, 2007, it was, it was on a, you know, flat to down across the country. What we're seeing, and you can see it in that bright red line, is that the, the Logan volume has been spiking up pretty significantly, especially in the last few years. Part of that has been the addition of new airlines, part of it's been the addition of, of new, new destinations, and, and of course, then the battle between, the battle between JetBlue and, and Delta. But, so when you look at year-over-year, 2018, US flight volume rose by 2.8 percent, you know, pretty good clip. Logan's volume increased 5.7 percent, more than double of what that number was. So, so you're seeing, and what's, what's also important to note is that that 5.7 percent increase was far, far above what Massport predicted, and far above what they're, what they're predicting in the reports that they supply to the Commonwealth. As we saw at the beginning, 2018, Logan saw the most passengers in its history. There's no reason to believe that that trend is going to, is going to go away anytime soon. Would expect 2019 to be the highest, and then 2020 as well. And part of the issue here is that, is that airlines like Delta, airlines like JetBlue, are turning Logan into a hub rather than a destination. So you're seeing a lot of, a lot of money being spent on retail space, some pretty amazing retail space at Logan right now. And that's to, that's to keep the, the through-passengers busy, and to allow them to have a nice meal, to, to go to Vineyard Vines if they want to, and, and pass the time in between flights, never leaving the airport. In my opinion, that weakens the economic engine argument that, that Massport keeps, keeps throwing out, because those funds don't make it into the cities and towns that, that surround the airport. So back to projections, the ESPN report is something that, that, that is, is published about every five years or so, it stands for the Environmental Status and Planning Report, and it's what the Secretary of Energy and Environmental Affairs receives so that it can have a sense of what the, what the potential impact might be in terms of environmental issues and so on. You'll see in that bright red circle that they projected compound annual growth for the next ten to fifteen years of only 1.1 percent. Again, last year, let me see if I can go back, 5.7 percent, but they're saying it's only gonna be 1.1. So why does that matter? Well, let's move to the observations, and I'll, and I'll, and I'll talk about that. The, in my opinion, the ESPN is misleading at best. So the, the top red line is, well, let me, let me step back and, and tell you what we're seeing here. The, the, there are a couple lines here, the two bottom ones are based off of the Massport projections. One was taking that 1.1 percent growth rate over, or looking at that 1.1 percent growth rate over ten years, the other was looking at it over fifteen years. Turns out that even their math was wrong, that the going from four-hundred-and-one to four-hundred-and-eighty-six over a ten-year period yields a, a growth rate of 1.94 percent, so almost double, and doing the same over fifteen years is 1.29 percent. So when you do a projection like this, rather than just assigning a number and hoping that that will hold true, you take a look typically at what the historicals have been. So the black line and the red line are, are the growth rates over, over two, five-year periods. The one, the black one is the one that corresponds with the, the five-year period that coincides with the date of the report, or the year of the report, 2017. The red one corresponds with the five-year period that, that ended with this, this historical, this historical year for Logan, 2018. And you'll see that, that the, that what happens when you use numbers that are based off of history rather than on hope, that you, that you achieve the Massport's ten- and fifteen-year projections five to, five to ten years earlier than, than Massport projected them to, to take place. And when you take it all the way out to that fifteen-year period, you see that based off of, of more recent growth rates, you're going to see between one-hundred and two-hundred more thousand, two-hundred-thousand more flights per year. Now whether or not the airport can accommodate, accommodate that, it's a different issue, but the, but the, the Massport projections are wildly off in terms of what the reality is. And that's, that's a problem, in part because they're, they're one of the only agencies that gets to, that gets to make these types of reports and not have them challenged. these types of reports and not have them challenged. Now, along with that, I think what's important is that not only does the MIT model, or sorry, not only does the Massport model not reflect reality, the MIT noise model doesn't reflect reality either. So when we've talked to Dr. Hansman, he has stated multiple times that his noise model assumes that gear and flaps are fully deployed about six miles out. So that's where the top red area is, just over the Nippon River Reservation. What we see quite frequently, especially when it's windy, is that gear is down miles before that six-mile spot. What you see there is that's a picture of JetBlue 1482 this past Saturday around, you know, 1:20, 1:30 in the afternoon. You can see the gear is down. And in fact, a third to a half of the flights that went over at that period all have their gear down. Reason for that is that pilots often refer to landing gear as rubber air brakes. So when you're flying, when you're moving really fast and you're trying to manage your speed, you can drop your gear far sooner than you can your flaps. And so it allows you to get the plane down to the speed that you want so that you can bring in safely for a landing. But when you have, and you know, there have been times on especially windy days that we've seen gear down over Randolph. So, you know, transiting all of Milton with gear already down.
We know from the Tisdale case, which was the infamous Savati-Tisdale case, that the gear actually went down as it crossed over Lombardos, which is south of 128.
Exactly right. And so when you've got Massport's numbers being wrong and you've got MIT's noise model being wrong, it creates some real questions about the accuracy of the calculations that are being made. Now, Professor Hansman is aware of the discrepancy and he's aware of it because I've talked to him about it. And I asked him, you know, would the fact that these, that gear is down miles earlier have an impact on the model? His response, yes, it probably would. Now, one of the ways to address that would be to have, as I have down at the bottom, proper field examination, to have Hansman and his team come out when the winds are high, when the gear is down early, to show that the model is not accurate and should be amended, should be amended to reflect the actual conditions, again, not the wishful ones like what Massport has put out. Another issue, nighttime noise abatement. We've had a number of complaints that planes are flying all throughout the night. And that's not supposed to be happening. Now, there are a number of factors here as well. Nighttime noise abatement obviously is intended to let people sleep. Sleep is important. It's important to cognition, it's important to healing, it's important to overall mental health. And according to Massport, the nighttime period runs from about midnight to 5:00 a.m., at which point, conditions permitting, they're supposed to be using runway 33. Now, these screenshots came from the night of the 10th. As you can see, the timestamp is 12:24 a.m. And flights were still humming along into Logan. There are four or five planes there on the monitor screenshot and the one on the far left I'll go into in a moment. But those flights lasted until about 2:00 a.m. despite the fact that the winds were so light, four to five miles an hour, that they could use any runway they wanted to. So again, this is convenience, not safety. Traffic did shift to runway 33 just before 4:00 a.m., but for whopping three planes. Two of them were UPS planes, one was a passenger jet, and they were all down within maybe 45 minutes if I'm remembering correctly. 4R came back on at 4:30 a.m., again despite light winds, giving Milton residents a whopping two and a half hours of quiet in conditions that did not require 4R to be used. We are, again, seeing this become the norm, not the one-off, as it becomes easier and easier to just land more and more planes on 4R. And one thing that I think is very important, and Kent Johnson has done some really nice visualization of this, the number of flights that invade the quiet hours of the night are only increasing because that's when the volume is lowest. So this situation is only going to get worse as air traffic intrudes further and further into those nighttime hours. And it's entirely possible that we'll see flights 24 hours a day, not just, you know, not just 21, 22, and so on. From there, oh, sorry. So that, you'll see that flight in the black circle there, FLC 72. That's an FAA flight inspection plane. And we see those from time to time when the FAA is testing something. I happen to just, you know, by dumb luck, see that flight on the monitor when I was looking at the traffic and went to see what its flight path was. This is the flight path that you see from FlightAware, which is a different website that allows you to track flights from beginning to end. And what this showed was what the FLC 72 left white planes about 10:52 p.m., landed at Logan on the 4s at 2:21 a.m. These are used to inspect the runways and, more accurately, inspect ground-based instrument flight procedures and electronic signals. Based off of that flight path, where it's going back and forth over the areas over Milton and to the south of the city, it looks like they're looking for testing, inspecting the equipment on 4R, 4L, or both. There is suspicion that there are either upgrades or repairs being made to the 4s based off of some of the messages that you get when you call in to see what the, or see what the, what runways are being used. And as per usual, when one of these FLC flights is seen, the flight track data is removed from the portal. Not sure who does it, but when I went back later in the day to try and pull up the flight on this type of rendering, it was gone. And I played back the entire loop from before the flight left until after the flight should have landed, and it's nowhere to be seen. So I don't know why they remove them like that. It is a flight that the public should be able to see, but they do.
Big a plane, is it?
It's a, I want to say it's a Beechcraft, so relatively small plane, a turboprop plane. And the altitude, if I remember the flight track, is, you know, 2,000, 3,000 feet. But as you can see, it's making loop after loop, circle after circle, looking, testing, seeing what the signals are, and to figure out, you know, presumably, how the ILS and other equipment is working on 4R and/or 4L. So recommendations. We've got a number of them, as you would expect. And apologies for the eye chart and happy to go through these in greater detail. A lot of these are records requests and examinations. First one, to get the actual statement of work for the Hansman MIT study. And we have the one for what HMMH is doing. But we don't know what Professor Hansman is being asked to do. We found out from the HMMH statement of work that 4L was specifically left off of the report or left off the project. And we should be able to ask for that and should be able to ask Congressman Lynch's office for help if we need to. The next one is to look at the record of decision to determine whether or not that can be used to compel Massport to create a new runway use plan as required by the record decision. The reason for the recommendation is that on one of the noise complaints that I filed, the person who responded from Massport said that the MCAC chose not to move forward with creating a runway use plan. That wasn't true. I was at that meeting. What they were told was that the FAA wasn't going to fund the project anymore, so there wouldn't be the opportunity to go into it. And so, and also, the record decision does not allow the MCAC to just decide not to create one. The only way that they could have gotten rid of the old one was to replace it with a new one. The other is, or number three, to move or to prevent or delay a wake recat, and that's a wake recategorization from occurring at Logan. The reason that's important is that a wake recat allows you to have more and more flights closer and closer together. The idea is that they believe that you can, by recategorizing the wakes and how far you need to keep the planes away from each other, that you actually do preserve safety. But when you have 4R and 4L going at the same time, that means that with a wake recat, you're going to be able to cram more and more planes into that airspace and hit the people in the sandwich even harder than they're being hit today. Number four, hire a technical consultant to advise on how to reduce the impact of air traffic over Milton. We have a, we do have a dedicated and, you know, hearty, feisty band of volunteers on this topic, but we're not technical experts. We can take a look at the charts, we can make estimates, we can do a whole, a whole large number of things, but we need a technical consultant to actually talk to us about what is possible. The idea that civilians should be able, or should be forced to provide recommendations to technical experts like the, like Massport and FAA has is, you know, quite frankly ludicrous. Number five, formally invite Professor Hansman and the MIT team to Milton to observe when and where landing gear is actually deployed so that their model can be updated accordingly. The only way you're going to be able to do that is to come out and see it. You know, I can take all the photos I want, citizens can take all the photos they want, but they really need to come out and see and start measuring where these things are taking place. The next ones are talking about Massport specifically, and talking about both the new CEO but also each new trustee, and these trustees are appointed on an annual basis. And the request is that we ask that their compensation be tied to minimizing the impact of airplane noise and air pollution on local communities. As we were coming up with the original idea, we initially thought, well, could we just reduce the number of complaints? And there are a number of ways, both proper and artificial, to reduce the number of complaints. And the issue is really that we need to reduce airplane noise and air pollution. So we think that their compensation, the way they're recognized should reflect that. Number eight, and we've been talking about this and we'll be talking about the agenda for this tomorrow night at the ANAC meeting, hold a town hall to update the people on what is happening and what they can do, or some of the specific actions that they can take to help their voices be heard. Reach out to the community noise lab, and I believe that's been done to get Milton included in its work to get a sense of what the noise levels are around town. Reach out to the school board and raise their awareness on the issues of airplane noise and air pollution. A number of studies have shown that repeated airplane noise does have a negative impact on cognition. We are very proud of our schools, we have invested heavily in those schools. And so we want to make sure that we're getting the results that those schools should be able to provide our children. The next, reach out to our federally elected officials and ask them to compel the FAA to provide the results of the noise study that has been allowed to draft, linger in draft form. A number of people have tried to obtain that report through FOIA requests. The response has been that because the report is in draft form and has not been provided to the FAA, that a FOIA request is not possible because the document has not yet been received. It is a clever ploy and one wonders why they would not want to share that information with the public. Number 12, establish working rules for oversight of our current MCAC rep and for communicating the town's position through the representative. The idea here is to provide clarity and transparency so that all the townspeople know what the position is and what's being done to help articulate it. And then the last, to create the position of airplane advocate to advance the cause of fair and equitable air traffic distribution for the town of Milton. There's a separate document that was submitted as part of this and it's been discussed at the ANAC meetings and will take, I think, further consideration by the select board. But the idea is that there are a number of actions that would be, that could be taken, should be taken by someone working for the town as a hired position to help coordinate some of these things, some of the other types of things, because of the amount of effort and the amount of coordination that is really required to do this job well. And then the last one is a plea. This is, this was something, and this was the reason why I wanted to make a change to the presentation. This was a post that, as I was coming in from town a few hours ago, you can see timestamp is 5:42. Someone posted this on Facebook, on the Fair Skies Nation page. "Hi all, I'm new to Milton and new to airplane noise. They fly directly over the house and down the street. The noise is insane. Is there anything one can do to make it more tolerable?" We can't have this. We can't have this happen to the people who move in. We can't have this become something that we're known for. It has to be something that we address and something that we make sure is never a post that we ever see again. This isn't fair to the people who live here. So thank you. I appreciate the talk.
Thank you.
Any questions? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andy.
Questions, comments from the members?
I just have one question.
Mr. Wells.
Like, clearly, just coming back from Alaska, you leave, especially if you're taking an early morning flight out of Logan, you think driving in there at 6:00 a.m. or 5:00 a.m. or 4:30 a.m., you think, oh, it's a quiet day. And then you get out at any of the terminals and you walk through the front door and you look at the queues and like, wow. But Massport, I mean, Massport, not the FAA, but Massport is in the business of making money for Logan. I mean, they're a money-making operation. And you articulated this in the design of the airport, the number of people going through the airport, the environment that they've created in the airport now, everything from restaurants, I mean, it's, they've got all the top-name restaurants in there. How do you combat such a massive state agency?
It's a great question and one of the things that was in the headlines, and I'll see if I can jump to it. The, come on, they're spending, let's see, it's near the bottom, $1.5 billion on spending an automated people mover that will bring passengers from the terminals, also improve the rental carriers in a Blue Line station. They have no intention of slowing down.
I agree. Every time you go there, it's bigger and, I mean, it just gets bigger and bigger.
So, I mean, one of the avenues would be to talk to the Commonwealth and say, look, for one, the projections are just nonsense. They're just made-up numbers and don't reflect reality. The other is to continue to petition the FAA and petition our federally elected officials and say, this isn't right. And one of the other things that I think is important is that as volume at Logan has increased, volume at TF Green, volume at Worcester has decreased. So we have regional airports, they're just not being used. Why are they not being used? One guess would be that you've got this revenue engine in the terminal. So why wouldn't you want to push as many people through as possible?
Isn't that part of the reason why Massport took over the Worcester Regional Airport, which was a municipal airport, to try and take some of this, shift some of this load from Logan?
That presumably, yeah. If, I'm trying to remember what the actual story was, but the idea was to balance it because this model is not sustainable. And MIT's own studies have shown that without the addition of a runway, without the addition of more parallel opportunities from more of an east-west point of view, that the cities to the north of Boston and to the south of Boston will bear an undue burden in terms of flight growth.
Other questions, comments from the members? Ms. Collins?
Well, just thinking about the landing gear issue, are you aware of any technology that airline manufacturers are entertaining to help with that issue of needing to slow down sooner and it not being landing gear that's used?
I'm not aware of a specific technology, but I am aware of what other airports do. So Frankfurt, for example, one of the busiest airports in the world, handles more flights than we do, handles more passengers than we do, handles more cargo than we do. They are very specific in terms of the amount of noise that you can create and when you can put your gear down. And if you run afoul of those rules, you get a fine. They also have nighttime curfew, something that we thought we had, but that went away with ANCA. And so the technology is really willpower. The, Hansman has said quite clearly in his most recent report that he's not talking to the airlines about it because the pilots don't want to do it. And it's just easier for them to drop the gear, to manage their speed, than it is to actually control the aircraft in a different way. The pilots that I've talked to, their response was, well, the gear goes down when the gear goes down. So that's, you know, that's just the way they look at it. But there's no reason, there's no safety reason to put the gear down that early. There's really no safety reason to put it down six miles out. You're still 1,700, 1,800 feet up in the air if you're following the glide slope. So it's just a matter of managing the aircraft differently. One of the things that we had talked about was a steeper glide slope, which actually is used at other airports. 3.2 gets you through the airspace faster and with less thrust because you're actually using the aerodynamic qualities of the aircraft to get you through. Because one of the other factors is, you know, why does noise ramp up? It's not necessarily the airframe that's the problem. But when you create, when you drop your gear, you're creating drag. When you're creating drag and need to maintain airspeed, you're, you're using more thrust. If you're using more thrust, you're using more gas. And so, if next gen is meant to, if the glide slope is meant to minimize fuel consumption, dropping gear early is the exact opposite. So, you know, one of the things that we had, we had talked about was asking Massport to create some specific flight procedures, and the FAA said, look, if Massport puts procedures out, people will follow them. They have to, but they don't want to. Why don't they want to? Revenue.
What makes them think that some new procedures would reduce revenue?
Uh, because it wouldn't be as, as, we, uh, the, the perception is that if you, if you create a procedures that altered the way that you had to approach the airport, that it would make it less, less attractive for, for, for airlines to, to use us because you'd have to work harder.
Okay. But where are they going to go?
Great question.
I mean, it's Boston.
Right. And if, and if it's being used as a hub, they're going somewhere else anyway. So, what's the, what's the harm? What's the harm of, of keeping the skies a little quieter? And, you know, what's the harm of keeping the skies a little quieter? But also, you know, that, that only addresses part of the problem, the unchecked growth, the unchecked growth in, so, you know, back to, back to, you know, math is kind of important. The, back to this number, if they're saying that it's maybe going to be 486,000, and in reality, if you, if you use the, the most recent growth rates, it's really going to be 587 to 684,000 flights. That's not, you know, they're not interested in what the people on the ground think. They're interested in trying to get a business case through.
So, I see money as the driving force.
Yeah, obviously, but...
Other comments, questions? Members? Thank you, Andy. This is very helpful. What I think we'll do, either at the next meeting and the meeting after that, is, is, you know, come up with a plan for addressing each of these recommendations. Perhaps we can do that at the next meeting. And perhaps Member Collins and I can, you know, sit down and figure out a plan. Some of these, as you mentioned, have been, you know, in the process of being addressed. For example, I know, you know, our MCAC rep has raised the issue just this week, I believe, of Wake Recap.
Exactly.
With the executive committee of the, of the MCAC, and he's going to raise it again with the Aviation Subcommittee. So, and as you just pointed out, the Community Noise Lab, we've been in touch with them. And so, so there are some of them that we've been in the process, but we, we need to go through each one of them and figure out a plan for, for action now that we have, you know, the board has the recommendations and we can, we need to do something with them now. So, so we'll have to get on that right away.
Chris, thank you very much. I appreciate the time.
Thank you for all your work.
Thank you, Andy. Okay. Item nine, discussion, approval of a bring-your-own-bottle policy. We've had a public hearing on this. We've had some draft regulations. We have had some additional draft regulations with comments that have been circulated. Comments came in as recently as noon today, I believe, from Attorney DeLuca, who we've heard from twice on this issue. So, we can attack this however the members see fit. I, I think the, the initial decision would be to decide whether we want to adopt a bring-your-own-bottle policy, and then perhaps we can dig into the substance of, of the draft policy and the changes that have been made since we've seen it last. So, as we understand it from Attorney DeLuca, the lay of the land right now is, there is no, there is no...
Statutory guidance.
Well, I was, I was going to say, there's no, nothing stopping the holder of a common victual license from allowing bring-your-own-bottle in their premises. And the question is whether we want to have a policy that addresses that. So, with that, comments, questions? Mr. Wells?
So, I know, so I was away for the, I had to watch it, and I don't have a cop, because I don't have a computer, but...
Oh.
Don't worry about it. It's, it's okay. So, I have, I only was able to look at it quickly because I've only been home a short time. So, my only thought, and I, I said this a little bit earlier today, is that, you know, we've historically been a community who really didn't have a lot of liquor licenses. I mean, we weren't, we weren't really in the, in effect, I think, 30 years ago, I think we had two, which would have been Legion Post and Boston Country Club. But from my own work experience and knowledge, people bringing liquor to, whether it was the women's club, the Hoosier Club, a local parish, a local school, for many years, Saturday nights at Nukem Farms, there was a piano player, I believe his first name was Tom McSherry, who would play there on Saturday nights, and people go there and bring their own liquor. And it was never really an issue. As a matter of fact, to our credit, even all the licensed establishments that we do have today, we don't really have, they're not trouble spots. I don't think, I don't think this board or myself, or she, and the current chief, Chief King, have had to deal with any issues regarding, I heard Attorney DeLuca say something at one point, he made a comment about the Wild West. There is no Wild West in Milton, but I just, my, my only thought is, because there isn't a lot of this in the Commonwealth, I just don't want to hurt some of the practices that exist. And as I say, I didn't have really a lot of time to look at this. I don't want to hurt current ongoing practices that people use, whether it's local school groups, community groups, whatever it is. Again, this came from the Hoosier, the Milton, the Milton Club, but, you know, for 50-plus years, that's how the Milton Club ran. That's how the Milton Club, this building here that we are sitting in, when I was a kid, was either a VFW or a Legion Post. It was BYOB, that's how they ran it. So, I, that's just my own, look, I, I spent my life in a business where we impose regulation fine and sometimes deprivation of freedom, so I get that part of it, but I just, I'd rather I'm really kind of look at this. I really want to talk to David myself, but if you guys really want to push this, you've done work on this, I'm okay, but that's just my own two cents. I don't want to create something I'm not so sure we need it. That's my own thought.
Other questions from the members? Ms. Collins?
I just have a question for Richard, because I'm not, I'm not entirely clear, Richard, on what your position is. So, you, you don't want to hurt existing businesses? Do you mean businesses, restaurants that have licenses already?
No, 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 no. Places that don't. So, like, even a place like, Nukem Farms wanted to say, go back to this on a Saturday night, they can do it. I mean, they, they did it for years. And I, I, they don't even know I'm saying this. I'm just going by the, the things that I knew that existed. Just saying, like, the KSC was, it was there for what, 35, 40 years, and that's how it ran. It was BYOB. So, I don't, I don't, that's, my, my bigger issue is there are so many community things that go on in our churches and our schools. I didn't really have a chance to look at this. I don't want to hurt any of them. I don't.
But so, just, so, so you're, are you advocating not putting in a policy? Because if we don't have a policy, then the establishments can do whatever they want to do.
Yeah, as they're doing now.
Which, which I think is what was meant by that comment about anything goes to the Wild West, that really, there's no, if there's no policy, they can do anything they want.
Right.
So, you're advocating to keep it that way.
Yes. Am I correct? There aren't a lot of communities that have done this.
I think that's what, I think that's what we understood.
I thought David said that. I thought he had a look on.
I think that's what we understood.
He did say that. One thing, and I can only speak for the church that I was president of the board of, but I would imagine that it's not very different for other religious organizations. We need to be insured, or, you know, a religious institution that has a building anyway, it needs to be insured. And it became our practice to apply for one-day liquor licenses. There's no, oh, we're cleaning the kitchen tonight, let's have everybody have a glass of wine. That doesn't go on because that safety is taken so seriously. So, I, I'm not sure about other institutions, but just to let you know, so, so that you understand what, what is probably going on in, in, in a lot of...
I don't want to, I don't want to, if, if you all feel that strongly that you want to do this, I'm okay with it, but I just, it was the Wild West thing that jumped out when I heard that. I'm like, we really, and have been a community where, in the totality of it, we really don't have any issues. We've not had, and BYOB has existed in a lot of places that most people wouldn't even think of. County College, before President Quigley, had a licensed pub that was open from Thursday to Sunday night. He did away with it, but I know many of the functions that they do are like a BYOB-type thing. So, that's, I, I just don't want to hurt someone who's been doing something in this community for years without issue, and suddenly now we do this, and they're like, now what are we doing? That's, but I didn't really have time to delve into this, so...
Have, have we had any feedback from any establishments that may be, that are, that are doing something like this? It might be hurt? I don't know if we've heard anything from any establishment like that, but that's...
I think, frankly, that's sort of, I don't want to say part of the problem, but as I see it, there's no compelling reason to put this in place or vote in favor of it. If I were to, if someone who holds a common victual's license came to us and said, we need some guidance, I have a real problem, then I'd be more inclined to support this. But there's no compelling reason for me to vote in favor of this. So, to me, at the risk of sounding flippant, and I don't mean to be, it's a solution in search of a problem. Like, it's just, everything's going fine, there's no real issues. If there were to be some issues that arose that needed to be addressed, the necessity for a policy like this might make more sense. I don't see that we need it. And I'm happy to, you know, I, I tend to agree with Richard in some of the points that he raised earlier. So, you know, I'm not inclined to vote, you know, in favor of a policy or putting one in place or really even discussing it.
Can I ask a question?
Ms. Collins?
So, Tony, because I was giving some thought after the meeting to the comments that you made at the last meeting. At the last meeting, I was in favor of doing this, mainly because I know that the Milton Club is the one seeking this. But you raised the point about, I think you suggested Tino's, do we want to have somebody coming in with a bottle of wine or beer, whatever the case might be, to a restaurant like a sandwich shop like that? Or Stella's in East Milton, use that as an example. And I thought that where you were going with that was that we may not want to, we may want to put a policy in effect that would prohibit that. So, I, so after the meeting, giving some further thought, I thought maybe we would want to allow it for, say, the Milton Club or an established organization that's going to have a staff that would be large enough to handle serving the alcohol and, and all the other responsibilities that's set out in this policy. But perhaps for a small sandwich shop, we may want to prohibit it. And I thought that's where you were going.
See, that's my point. See, because this puts restriction, as I understand it right now, the way things are, it's at the discretion of the business owner. Okay?
With a common victual license.
Correct. Correct. We put this in place, now we put a burden, we place a burden on the business owner, because the business owner, okay, if he's inclined to allow someone to bring their own bottle, he can do that now at his own discretion. Now, it becomes restrictive, and they have to carry insurance, their employees have to be trained. So, it actually, in some ways, hurts them more than it might help them. And if there were business owners that were saying, oh, well, here's a problem that I'm running into, and we need some guidance from the board, and we need some guidance from the locals, I might say, you know what, you're right, that's a good point, let's put something in place. But absent that, again, it comes back to my point, well, I'm not sure that we need this. The timing of it, I think, is, isn't right. It might be down the road, it isn't now, and for those reasons, I'm not inclined to support it.
Mr. Wells?
To, to Ms. Collins' point about Stella's. Stella's is another one that I believe, years ago, was open on Saturday nights, and you could bring your own wine with you and have a bottle of wine while you had dinner. To say, it, it's definitely existed here because we were a community, I mean, and only a place where I had professed, I taught in Crone Justice and the Vineyard for a long time, and the Vineyard is an island, which mostly was exclusively a BYOB island, six communities. I mean, it's changeable now because of money, but it's, I've never really seen, to Tony's, if I thought there were an issue, I would say, okay, let's do this. I just don't see us regulating something that, a problem that doesn't really exist. There is no Wild West there. There really doesn't exist.
Ms. Collins?
Um, I, I, I submitted some, some changes that actually, I think, now that I went back and I looked at ours versus the ones that Mr. Corcoran had submitted are actually counter to what they're looking for. And that started me thinking about what Tony had said at the last meeting. And I started thinking about the fact that the Chamber of Commerce hasn't come and said this is something that would benefit merchants, and we haven't had other organizations come to us. So, I'm, I'm not sure that we really do need this, and I understand that the Milton Club is in a difficult position, and I'm not sure what, I'm not sure what to do. But I, I don't want to hurt businesses.
So, let me suggest this, the, to the members, there have, there have, there's been a couple of questions about the Milton Club and how this would affect the Milton Club. Do we want to hear from the representative from the Milton Club to see how that would, how it would affect the Milton Club one way or the other?
Just to respond to that, as this policy is written in this draft format, it applies only to businesses with common victual's licenses.
Correct.
And given the Milton Club doesn't hold a license like that, they wouldn't be subject to this policy anyway. So, I don't see the point.
He can, right, he can do what he wants. The law is silent on it. But I'm going to give you another example, and I'm, I'm, this is, because there are so many that I know of, and I don't want to throw them all out there. So, let's say I'm one of the beauty places in the square, or the hair places or the nail places, and I want to have like a Friday night, like, I'm going to bring in someone and you bring your own. Those things exist in this world. They exist. And so, now it's appearing, and I'm like, I don't know, I just, as I say, look, I've, I've, I've imposed regulations, fines, handcuffs at all on people. I just, I just don't want to regulate where I don't think we need to do it. If, if something had happened, I could see why.
Right.
But nothing's ever happened.
So, is it a pleasure for the members to hear from the representative of Milton Club? Mr. Corcoran, do you want to say anything?
Sure. I think Ned Corcoran, we, the Milton Club authorized me to provide comments because we want to make sure that if there was a regulation that was being imposed, that it would be correct. And our biggest concern, and I think Peter Kelly's biggest concern, was the notion that you would be no direct supervision of the consumption of alcohol on the premises, and that, that type of liability that that could impose, particularly because he does in, in, with respect to his, the, the one-day licenses, he's got to be fully insured, he's got to be, he's got to be fully trained and staffed and all of that. If, if this board is, is, the position of the board is that you're going to just accept the status quo, then my advice to Peter would be book them. Get your events in, have people bring their, their beer and wine, and go forward until such time as you have the capacity to apply for a liquor license.
Presuming you have a common victual license.
You won't need a common victual's license if there's no policy. If you do adopt the policy, he's prepared to file an application for a common victual's license and have a hearing the same night that he would apply for this permit, and he'd do it in a, in a single hearing. So, he's prepared to go either way. I think he was arriving at a point where we're at least a couple of months away from the IRS recognizing 501(c)(7) status. We now know that the earliest we can expect that is probably mid-November. He's down to about one or two one-day licenses left. He's got several, he's got three big nonprofit entities in town looking to use his facility. He's also being requested to host a significant memorial service at the premises. And how does he do that relative to when these things are scheduled and when he could possibly get a liquor license? So, I think when he reached out originally to the town, Mr. DeLuca was tasked to look at it, and, and he proposed some regula, these drafts of regulations. What we were doing is responding to the specifics of the regulation and preparing to figure out from a timing perspective, when could these be adopted? If they are adopted, then how much time does it take to have, to file the applications, schedule a public hearing, do whatever relative to when his, his events are scheduled to take place? But if the tenor of the, if the decision of the board is, we don't need a policy, we just want to leave things as they are, then I think he can go ahead and, and book as many events as he has capacity to with a BYOB and do it, you know, and do it. That would be my understanding. And then my advice to him would be call, call those people that are, you know, waiting to hear whether or not you're going to be able to...
I don't know if that's accurate. Comments and questions from the board? Mr. Wells?
Just one question. Milton Club does not have a common victual's license.
They do not.
So, this wouldn't even apply to them anyway?
It would if they applied for it and it was granted the same night.
If you apply for a common victual's license, was that your intention ever to do that, though?
Yes.
It was? Only because of this policy?
Yes, he was not going to apply for a CV license until he knew whether or not a CV license was necessary to be...
To fall under this policy.
To fall under this policy. If it's not necessary, he doesn't have a CV license today. He does cater events, does it without a CV license.
Okay, sure.
Whether that's appropriate, it's a different question, and you need to look at that.
This is a lot of work for this board for something that's so, like, let's say I'm Mackey, and I'm using, let's say, and I want to have like a Friday, and like, so we used to have a bowling alley, and the bowling alley would rent for, you could have a party there, you could have a birthday party, whatever, and if you were over 21, they would allow you to bring your own alcohol. They did it for years, it was like, from the time I go in, that was what they did. It was a dull talk, you know, but I just, I don't know. And you're already, we're doing this for about three months, so it's a lot of work.
Any other questions or comments? Tony?
I think the issue is now becoming a little bit more convoluted. I'm not sure that I necessarily agree with your point, Ned, earlier, that, well, first of all, let me, let me take a step back and reemphasize a point that I've made earlier. I want to see Peter Kelly and the Milton Club succeed. I think the board wants to see that. I don't think that this is necessarily the way to do it. Peter, I understand, is boxed in, the Milton Club's boxed in. Right now, he's looking to book events to generate revenue. The only way that he is going to continue to book events is if he can serve alcohol. Right now, he's done that with a series of one-days. Those one-days are about to run out. Peter understood the risks that he was taking when he embarked on this. It was a matter of time, and you just yourself mentioned that you're getting close to getting that status, which would then allow him to do that. My suggestion might be to continue down that path and see if he can achieve that before, you know, addressing this. I mean, we're essentially putting something in place or not based on the request of this one club, and I don't think that's the right thing to do.
And it was not Peter's intention when he was reaching out for guidance from the town, for the town to move to create this BYOB permit. I think he wanted to understand whether he could do it. And I think that what happened was that Mr. DeLuca got involved, and he started researching, came up with a set of policies. We then reacted to what we saw, and if the board was going to go in that direction, we thought that it should be correct, which is why we commented on it. Peter's intention is to, you know, move as quickly as he can relative to where he stands on the 501(c)(7) status with the IRS. And in the interim, if it's determined that we don't, the town doesn't want to adopt the BYOB set of regulations, he can, he can book events and have people bring BYOB.
That's where I disagree. I don't think that's accurate.
Well, that may get determined in a court at some point, but someone's going to have to bring an enforcement action against him.
I think it's, I think to your point, and I thought about this a lot, prior to 2005, am I right to that? When the Board of Selectmen granted a liquor license to the Horseshoe Club, we had zero involvement in anything to do with any liquor dispensed there, the women's club, anywhere. If you rented it, you went there, you, that's how, that's how they ran them.
They weren't taking one-day liquor licenses?
No, never, never. There's no cash, it was open bar, you could get a ticket, you had to check your ID card. I mean, the policeman's ball, the fireman's ball, P.T., there were so many, and almost, we're going back to pre-existing, I don't, Mr. Shear, if you would just, could we just defer this? I'd like to talk to Dave DeLuca myself.
Yeah, no, absolutely, Richard. I think the tenor of the board is that we don't want to take action of this unless I hear something different. Ms. Collins?
I think we need to get some clarification, because if, if that's accurate, that this can just be done by any organization without applying for a one-day liquor license, then why are all these organizations applying for it?
Exactly, that's my other point.
So I want to be sure we've got the right...
They do that for money, that's for money.
But I want to be sure we got the right legal footing on this, that what we're assuming here is accurate.
Yes.
The one-day liquor license is specifically, you want to sell it, and you're going to make some profit from the sale of the liquor, that's where that comes from.
Or the entity is having, the Eustace estate is having an event versus I'm renting out the Eustace estate for my event, and I'm bringing my own alcohol, those are...
Or Milton Academy seeks it for the reunion classes every year.
It's for money, they sell, right, they sell it for money.
Right, so, I think that's... But I agree, since Mr. DeLuca's not here, I'd like some more.
Yeah, so Mr. DeLuca is at a special town meeting in Holbrook and could not make it tonight, and had suggested that this take place on the 25th when he could be here. So that's why Mr. DeLuca is not here to answer those questions.
So just from a, from a timing perspective, and unless, and I will speak with Mr. DeLuca directly, I heard him say that this is an unregulated area under chapter 138.
That's true.
And, you know, the town can adopt regulations if it wants to, but I don't think the town can prohibit BYOB.
I agree.
Anyway, there's no legal basis to prohibit.
Unless it adopts regulations.
Unless it would adopt regulations. Tonight is the last night for at least two of the functions that Peter's looking at, where he either needs to know that he's got to apply, and it doesn't time for a hearing by the first night, your first meeting in October, or there isn't. And he can, you know, he can move forward without, you know, operating under a BYOB permit or not.
Well, this might be getting outside the scope of the issue, but if, let's say hypothetically that were to be allowed, Peter's now booking events, but he's not selling alcohol.
Correct.
So he's making money on what, the room fee?
Yeah.
Yes.
And that's sustainable for him?
It...
Again, that's a different question, but it is and it isn't, I think it's related to this.
There's a different level of sustainable. But for him to have the ability to continue to book events where people are paying for a room fee and probably a corkage fee for the handling of the alcohol, but he's not bringing it in, he's not making a profit on, specifically on the alcohol, that that's enough to carry him through a two-to-four month period of time between when he runs out of the one-days and when he has the ability to secure a full-time license. If he doesn't get that, then all bets are off relative to the Milton Club.
I get it, I think we all do, but we're opening ourselves up as a board and as a town now, as Richard pointed out, to regulate behavior town-wide, so we're opening ourselves up to something that are unforeseen.
We're not asking you to do that.
Mr. Wells.
So to Mr. Frantin's point, what you're, the picture you're painting is how that conglomerate for 50 years. You paid a fee to rent it, and you paid whatever, whatever, you brought in the liquor. If you rented, you brought the liquor, you used their bartenders, their court, but you brought it yourself. And there is guidance on that, there is 138, Christine's very good about doing it, as Barbara was before, there's guidance on that, on how you, you know, where you can go and how you can buy it, which is very good under 138. But, I don't know.
Can I add one more thing? In a late conversation with Mr. DeLuca today, he did say that if this board approved the policy for BYOB, each instance of a BYOB being granted would require a butter notification. So I think that the fact, well, this wouldn't happen as quickly as I think Mr. Corcoran thinks.
Well, if you adopted it tonight, he would then have to apply this two-week advertising plus a butter notification. The earliest you could have a hearing would be October 9th.
That's my understanding as well.
It just doesn't make sense.
It doesn't. It's a lot of work.
So without objection, I think we're going to defer this. I will say that, given what we heard last spring, the neighbors may have a view on this, depending on how well it goes. So hopefully, it'll go very well, and all the, the neighbors' issues will be respected, and they'll be dealt with by the club, and I think that'll make things go a lot easily, a lot more easily. So that's the only thing that occurs to me, that we may have neighbors involved if there are issues. Mr. Wells?
Just my final point is that my issues are really not, I'm not even thinking of the Milton, I'm thinking more community-wide, the smaller, you know, the, someone who wants to do something that I know exists, and that's where I'm, I mean, this is just like, wow, this is a lot. I wouldn't do it, I'd be like, why bother? This is a lot, this is almost as much as getting a liquor license. It's more than a one-day, it's more than getting a one-day. I mean, we vote one-days like that, we're going to do something now, I mean, it's just, there's a lot of this, but all right, I'm with you, let's...
All right, Ms. Collins?
I just want to be sure that we have the correct information and the information we need if we are going to continue to consider a policy, which, and I'm not sure how we, how best to go about it, other than soliciting from the organizations in town feedback or comments to us, but, I mean, we could reach out to the chamber, but that's only going to pick up the businesses, it's not going to pick up the church or the private organizations that might want to do this. But it would be good to get a sense of exactly how wide is this group that we're talking about that would be impacted by it. I mean, because I'm hearing a lot of, well, Stella's used to do this, or, you know, the Women's Club doesn't have a building anymore, so actually, how widespread is it currently? I think that's a question.
It would take, it would take...
I'm not sure how we would get the answer to that.
Well, we had a public hearing, not that everyone's aware of public hearings and shows up, but we did have a public hearing, and it was, it was advertised, but maybe there are other ways to reach out to the chamber, to some of these organizations, and to see...
Yeah, I mean, there are some oversight and compliance requirements in the draft of the policy, which other communities have put into place, which may be beneficial to some situations.
And they may be beneficial, Richard, to a specific, I mean, you could write a policy that only applies to...
We could do that, we could do that.
To a site like the Milton Club, that wouldn't apply to some of those smaller...
This is big now, this is wide, this is, I'm just thinking of all the possibilities, I'm like, wow.
Right, right.
Right, and it's a policy that actually nobody really asked for.
Right. All right, thank you, Mr. Corcoran. We'll move on to item 10.
Thank you, thank you.
Discussion approval of the regional Seagate meeting. Apparently, we've had some feedback from Town Council. Ms. Collins, do you want to take this, or Mr. Dennehy, or Ms. Collins?
Well, I think we can dispense with the proposed motion. Kevin Freitag, our Town Council, spoke with the Ethics Commission this week, and because of the wording for the conference, marketing materials and solicitation, basically, we'd be asking, we're asked to sponsor the event, and all the municipalities involved are, and we can't use public funds to sponsor an event for a private group. So we received some follow-up from John Flynn today, and he reiterated that the informational materials made it clear that we'd be part of a marketing process, and that's not, that's not an allowed use of public money. So we'd be welcome to attend on our own, and however, in speaking with Mr. Golden today, Mike Dennehy and myself spoke with him, this, this has caused them to rethink not having the conference, but their approach to it. And he, he is going to be sending us a letter that we can consider sending to, say, the governor. I think that maybe we're going to want to choose a different approach, looking at something that we had talked about in one of our planning meetings, but the rest of you don't know about this, but I was wondering if we'd like to actually draft a letter talking about the effects of climate change that we see may affect Milton, and this would be one of them. But I think we'll be, Kevin Freitag and Bill Golden will be talking about, you know, how to really move, I don't want to say an initiative, but talks and studies that are needed forward on the regional basis in a way that is responsible to taxpayers and the town as a whole.
Could, Mr. Shear, could we go back to our original, we can't do that either?
No, I asked about that.
So we can't even support this financially at all, as a community?
Right, because we would be making basically a donation to a nonprofit foundation, so it doesn't...
Are you referencing the $10,000 commitment?
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
We had talked about it earlier.
I specifically asked Mr. Golden on the phone call today how the $100,000 from Quincy was secured, because Town Council said maybe this board and this town could follow that same path. It turns out that it's, it's an engineering contract with the town of, city of Quincy that he piggybacks on. So there's, there's an existing contract in place for engineering work through, through a company, and he works as a consultant for that company, so it's...
Mr. Golden does.
Mr. Golden, yeah. We were trying to follow, mimic that path, possibly, Town Council suggested, we look into how Quincy's $100,000 were secured, and it ends up being through an RFP with an engineering firm.
We could do that, an RFP is something we can definitely do.
His letter, which came in late today, suggests that this board support a letter to the Baker at Toledo Administration for his group to, for funding, for his group to study climate resilience.
State funding.
Right, state funding.
Yeah, so it's kind of taken a different path in the last couple of hours today.
To be continued.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
To be continued, all right.
So the conference is off, we're not having it?
No, he's, he's continuing to work on putting the conference together, but the funding may come through some different mechanism, or it may be that it's funded like a typical conference where people can just pay out of pocket and go if it's not something that their municipality can pay for.
Great. All right, item 11, future meeting dates. The next meeting will be two weeks from tonight, and then we have meetings on the 2nd and 4th Tuesdays in October, and we also have the MassDOT Public Information Meeting on October 22nd on the Route 138 project. And everyone all right with those, those meeting dates?
Just one question from Ms. Collins, what's the date of the NPLC meeting? You said this the other day.
I think it's the 23rd, 23rd, Monday night.
Week from Monday.
Very good.
Any other issues on the meeting dates? Seeing none. Item 12, approval of one-day liquor licenses. Here we are.
I'll make a motion to approve one-day liquor licenses for the Milton Club, number 27 out of 30, at 193 Central Ave. for Saturday, September 21st, 2019. In the Fruit Center Market Place at 10 Bassett Street for September 28th, 2019. For the Mary B. Wakefield Charitable Trust at 1465 Brusher Road for October 5th, 2019. Rebuild Fitness at 502 Grand Ave. for September 26th, 2019, for their grand opening ribbon and cutting celebration in October 17th, 2019.
Seconded. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Item 13, boards and committees appointments, Capital Improvement Planning Commission, Committee. Why don't you take this one, Tony?
I move to reappoint Town Accountant Amy Dexter, Consolidated Facilities Director Bill Ritchie, Planning Board Member April Lamarrau, Select Board Member Richard Wells Jr., Library Board Trustee John Folcarelli, Resident Lorraine D. of 27 Broadfield Road, Resident Michael Hale of 500 Brook Road, and appoint School Committee Vice Chair Elaine Craighead to the Capital Improvement Planning Committee through September 30th, 2020.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Item 14, ratification of the Trailside Museum proclamation. It is the 60th anniversary of the Trailside Museum, and there'll be a celebration this Saturday, and we have a proclamation.
This hasn't been presented yet, though, since it's Saturday, right?
It has not.
Okay, so I'm going to...
It's not to ratify.
All right, so I'm going to be approve of proclamation for the Trailside Museum's 60th anniversary celebration to be presented on Saturday, September 14th.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Item 15, thank you, item 15. This is a ratification of a proclamation that we put together for Congressman Lynch's District Director, Robert Fokes, Bob Fokes, who is, who is retiring, and we presented that, we presented that proclamation to him last Wednesday night when he was playing with his band, and so this is a ratification.
I'll make a motion to ratify a proclamation for District Director of Congressman Steven Lynch's office, Robert J. Fokes, congratulate him on his retirement and thank him for service on a personal note. I'll wait a second, go ahead.
Seconded. A motion been made and seconded. Further discussion, Mr. Wells?
I just want to say, you know, Bob's been a great advocate for this community, for he's, I've known him for a long time, a big loss, big shoes to fill, to fill his shoes. I was shocked when I heard, but I believe he's staying... I was shocked, but I believe he's staying part-time, though, he's, I can't see Bobby walking away completely, but a great advocate, a great rep for this community. Many people don't know him, but Pauline and I both have known him for quite some time, and a great advocate for our community for so long, he'd be missed, but he won't be that far away, I know that. So, thank you for thinking to do that, too.
And Ms. Collins and I, and Ms. Collins and I were there, and I think it's fair to say that, that it was appreciated.
Oh, yeah.
I, I think so.
He, for, for most people who don't know, if you watch the infamous South Boston breakfast going back to the days of Senator Steve Lynch, who was the face most prominently seen playing the guitar each year, sitting behind each and every speaker, is Bob Fokes, and, yeah, very good man.
All right.
He's also been helpful to us on the airplane issues over the years, too.
Oh, yes, yes, he's very good with that.
Grateful for that.
And continues to be.
Yeah. We should put him on ANAC.
Yes, yeah. All right, motion's been made in seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item 16 is deferred. Item 17, Mr. Dennehy's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board, pretty brief tonight, it seems like I'm forever apologizing to East Milton for the construction that's planned. This morning, PJ Keating, who is doing some milling and overlay work down there, finally, a la, part of the C S O, combined soil work that was done last year, descended upon East Milton to mill some, some of the side streets down there this morning, and it, and it was something out of a military exhibition with the trucks pulling in, so, I apologize, that work should be completed on those streets by Friday, with Alden Ave, Washington Street, and others being milled and overlaid. Finally, people will start to see proper asphalt in those neighborhoods and roadways. I would like to thank the Parks and Recreation Commissioners for being aware and initiating the striping of two pickleball courts. This floor is striped for pickleball, there's a large calling for pickleball in this community, and when I went out to Kelly Field yesterday, I saw four vibrant seniors in our community playing on the Kelly Field Court, so hats off to the Parks Commissioners and Mary Ann Sullivan, who's been advocating for pickleball in our town. The other court is at Andrews Field as well. Lastly, there's going to be an MBTA crossing construction work that's gonna take place on Central Ave. DPW Director Chase Berkeley met with MBTA officials, it's gonna be the weekend of October 4th to October 7th. They're anticipating work to start, basically, it's the crossing on Central Ave across the high-speed trolley line tracks that need to be repaired. It's gonna take place Friday night at 10 o'clock when service diminishes over that weekend, and service shouldn't be interrupted Monday morning, they should be back online. There will be diversions for all the buses, and they're working on diverting the bike path that's so heavily used on the weekends down there, so, more to come, but that, I just wanted to put it on this board's radar that, that there will be some activity down there that weekend. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dennehy. Item 18, the only thing that I have to say is, is to thank.
Would you enjoy?
Well, yes, very quickly, just thank you to Senator Timblety for hosting a roundtable on education, education funding tonight in Stoughton, and Ms. Collins and I were both able to attend briefly before this meeting. Milton was well represented, it was, Senator Timblety was accompanied by Senator Lewis, who's the co-chair of the Education Committee, and he answered a lot of questions and made a presentation on Chapter 70 funding, including school building funding, and so, thank you to Senator Timblety for that. The town was well represented, Ms. Collins was there, we also had at least three members of the school committee there, Chair, the Chair Sheila Varela, members Betty White, and I saw Ada Rose Meyer in there, I'm not sure if Elaine Craighead was there, went up, but, and the Superintendent Mary Gormle was there, so it was well attended on behalf of Milton, so thank you to Senator for that. We, we delayed our start time for that, and I thank all the members for that, raised a question about whether we want to change our, our start time, so just, I, I don't know if we want to have that discussion now, or just think about it, and, you know, the, I guess in the past there have been meetings at 7:30, so it's something to think about, unless somebody wants to talk about it now.
I'm more worried about you, like that.
Right, oh, and I, I was thinking we would talk about moving it earlier.
Well, so, so, so maybe we shouldn't have that discussion now, maybe we should just.
It was earlier, when I first came on this board in 2013, it started at 6:00, which was fine for anybody who's retired or who works in Milton, but if you're working in Boston, it's pretty difficult to get back here at that time, so we moved it back to 7:00, which is where it used to be, you know, the Warren Committee starts at 7:30, a lot of boards start at 7:30, I, I'd actually prefer that, but getting to 7:00 from 6:00 was, was a huge win, so.
Okay.
And it also, you know, one of the things I mentioned at the time was, for citizen speak, anyone who wants to come to citizen speak, most people work outside of the town, and it's not that easy to get here at 6:00 for them either, or for residents who might be coming in for a particular topic.
Do you want to go to 7:30?
I'd love to go to 7:30, but I'm, I'm guessing that it, that may not be what everybody wants to do.
I don't know, I mean.
And I'm not sure how that would impact the, you know, the staff in terms of coverage.
Yeah, maybe we think about it, maybe we think about it and.
What's the school committee, are they 7:00?
They're 7:00.
7:00.
They do 7:00, yeah. So, maybe we think about it and talk to the staff and see if, see if there's any reason to move. Okay, is that fair enough?
What were you thinking in terms of earlier?
The only reason I mentioned earlier was because a couple of times, we, we met earlier, and it, and I, I thought it was because you're, you're, to accommodate something for your schedule, and I thought, well, I can meet earlier, I, I didn't know if other people could too, but if it won't work, let's just stay with 7:00.
The other thing, too, wasn't it early, I thought summers were early, some, I thought some of meetings used to be like early as to get them done, and I remember that.
All right.
I mean, well, one thing, I just, to Katie's point, which is a valid one on citizen speak, it, it doesn't necessarily have to be at the beginning of the agenda. I understand the flow of the meeting, it might be a little choppy to put that as an agenda item somewhere in the middle, but provided that it is in fact on the agenda, it doesn't necessarily need to be at the beginning. I mean, I might suggest, the week prior when we met at 6:30, I think, made all the difference in the world, that one half hour. Depending on the length of the agenda, we could maybe make a determination when we post the meeting to hold it at 6:30, 7:00, or 7:30.
It's a good point.
It's not, it's not a huge variance, it's one hour, so if it's agenda-heavy, or if the agenda is heavy, and there's, you know, a number of things to get to, we move it up a half hour, if it's late, we bump it back a half hour.
It's possible.
We can call that in the moment, I think, I don't think that that's asking too much.
It's not, it's a, the only counter to that is you, you do want some predictability for the residents.
Right, right.
You know, it's nice to have some predictability, so they know when to tune in, or when to, or when to show up, but.
And I think, too, I, I personally don't want it to be a hardship for people who are at work and having to hustle here, it's difficult enough with the traffic situation.
Yeah, I think you want predictability also for future members of the board, you know, and that's why having the regular schedule instead of all these, we get, I mean, obviously at times it comes up, we need an emergency meeting, or it's something that's time-sensitive, but if it can be a regular time and a regular date, or regular dates during the week, I think that's preferable, because most people who serve on the board are gonna be people who are working outside of the town.
All right, well, to be continued. Members' reports, we don't have anything on the agenda, is anything that anyone has? Seeing none, citizen speak response, we don't have anything, future agenda items, does anyone have any future agenda items that we should be aware of?
Finance Committee's meeting on Friday, so we're meeting with the School Finance Committee, so at some point, not necessarily the 25th, but we'll need to be on an agenda to give a report at some point soon.
Maybe sometime in October, or is that too soon?
Yeah, I, um, we'll have a better sense on Friday.
Yeah, you don't have to be bound to it, yeah. Mr. Dennehy?
The Youth Task Force feasibility study will be presented on the 25th.
Okay. Anything else, anything else that we're not aware of? Seeing none. Item 22, Community Happenings, the Saturday, next, the Saturday is the Community Housing Forum.
Everyone come.
Ms., Ms. Collins is championing from 10 a.m. to noon. Also, this Saturday is the, the Trailside Museum's anniversary, so everyone, after they leave, the community forum can go to the Trailside Museum.
Where is Saturday, Ms. Chair, where is Saturday, here?
Here.
Tuesday, the 17th, the 100 Women Who Care at 10 Bassett Street, at, Friday, September 20th, Forbes House Museum Barn Fest Beer, Food, Music Program from 6:00 to 9:00. Saturday, September 21st, these are new ones, Milton Porch Fest, and Thursday, September 26th, the Rebuild Fitness Grand Opening and Ribbon Cutting from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. Ms. Collins?
May I add a couple of things? So, on the 15th, which is Sunday, Brookwood Farm is having their Farm to Table Dinner, we, we got an invitation, I, I have another engagement.
I do, too.
But, but it's 4:00 to 7:00. And then also, the Nippon's River Watershed Cleanup is, I believe, on the 21st, but people should check that out, it's really a wonderful occasion to get out, even see a new, new part of town you haven't really seen in depth, and meet people you haven't met before for a wonderful cause.
Great. Anything else? Mr. Wells?
Easter, Saturday, Sunday is the East Milton Neighborhood Association Annual Block Party at Crane Field from 11:00 to 2:00.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair? Mr. Ben?
After you attend the housing, Community Housing Forum, and you show up locally, remember that the plastic ban, bag ban is in effect on Saturday.
Don't worry, when you go to the Fruit Center, they tell you, all right, that they've been doing it since July. It's funny, you don't think about it, it's like, yesterday I was stopping shopping Truman, if you don't have it like that.
Right.
Put some in your car.
All right, item 23, I'll move to enter into executive session to conduct strategies, strategy sessions in respect, with respect to collective bargaining, believing that a discussion in open session may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and in preparation for contract negotiations with non-union personnel, the town administrator, believing that an open meeting, that an open session may, discussion